Have a support?
Second.
Motion made by trustee Foster, supported by trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Alright, so tonight Diane will be our clerk. Great, so Diane, can you please take roll call?
Okay, trustee Borninski.
Here.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Ganguly.
Good evening.
Supervisor Graham Pouda.
Good evening.
Clerk Seacrest. Treasurer Slavens is here. And trustee Snyderman.
I am here.
And then are we taking roll call of the DDA board?
So, we have trustee Prapp. Steve's up there. Trustee Coate. Not here. Trustee Gil.
I'm here.
Okay, great. Trustee Graham Pouda.
Good evening.
Trustee Hargrave. Trustee Klein Glass. Trustee Narra. Narain, sorry, Narain. Trustee Olson. Trustee Patterson.
Here.
Trustee Stelluliman. Trustee Waldbauer. There he is. That's Mark. And trustee Zankia.
Alright, great, thank you. Then we also have from our Rose Commission Khalil Khandal and Jim Castillo and anyone else that we haven't called? Great, can we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you. Great, the first item on our agenda and only item.
I hate to interrupt, but adoption of the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Kind of a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by trustee Snyderman, supported by trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Great, thank you. Alright, thank you. Amy, I will turn it over to you to introduce a presentation and then we can start.
Okay, so we have OHM here, they are on-call engineering service and they have been helping us with a lot of concept ideas for the boulevard. So as everybody knows, that's a big project that's kind of on the books, it's coming down the pike. So what we've been trying to do is trying to get some cost estimates of what we're going to be responsible once a boulevard comes in and that's going to include landscaping. So today, that's what we're kind of here. We formed a subcommittee between the township board and the DDA. Mark, Bart, Kurt Olson from the DDA, they all sat in on it and then we had Anne Marie, Michael and Summer that all kind of gave their time. And, you know, we worked on this for a couple of months with OHM kind of refining. We gave some ideas of what we wanted out there, you know, mostly natural indigenous planning and I think Ben, this is Ben from OHM, he did a fantastic job. And then this is Ken, he's from OHM also. So they worked together and gonna show you kind of what the subcommittee narrowed down the options to. And I think they came up with some pretty exciting ideas, but I'll give you the floor, Ben.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Just before you begin, we're getting some feedback. I think if everybody turns off their computer microphones, except for those that are on Zoom. If you're in the room, if you can turn your computer microphone off, please. And that might be also you, is that your computer, Ben?
Yes.
You might want to mute that because you do have a microphone.
Yeah, I believe it's off. I will double check, yeah, it's off.
Okay, great. Alright, thank you.
Good evening, Ben Weaver with OHM. As Amy mentioned, we've been working for the last couple of months just coming up with some concepts for the Ford Road corridor. Well, we went back and forth, I think we presented three or four concepts to start with and through our discussions, we narrowed it down to one, which I will share with you tonight. The idea behind this, we wanted to make it, the corridor more of a destination than someplace you pass through. We wanted to make it somewhere where not only do you come and shop, but maybe you stick around and you dine. We wanted to maintain the gateway and the wayfinding elements that had already been implemented, namely the color blocks per block when you drive through the corridor. So we wanted to stick with, so for example, if you're driving through and your destination is the red block, we wanted to make sure that all the plantings, all the materials that we use in that block maintained that red or tones of red, so that it wouldn't be confusing when you move through the corridor. We also looked at introducing maybe some gateway signage, so when you came into the corridor at both ends, you'd be welcomed. Maybe it says, "Welcome to Canton Township, welcome to our shop and dine district." Something like I said, to make it feel like it's a destination where you want to go and you want to spend time. Additionally, we wanted to make sure that all the plantings out there were easy to maintain, so that you didn't have to close the lane of traffic once a week, twice a month or whatever, to get out, have people working, weeding, mulching, watering, whatever the case may be, so that not only is it safer for the drivers and the pedestrians, but also for the workers who are down there. So everything that's here is native or low maintenance or both. And I'll dive right in and get going here. So our focus was, as you can see by the red outline here, our focus was roughly Sheldon, just past Hagerty. I recognize that we could extend a little bit further through 275, but for the purposes of this concept, we wanted to stick with this block here. That being said, a lot of these concepts could be utilized and extended further if necessary, but this was the primary area where medians were implemented into the roadway. So it's not just a big sea of concrete. These are some character images, some things that inspired us while we were working on our designs. We really liked the idea of the acrylic panels up in the upper left there. We thought that could provide a really nice pop of color and we could tailor it to fit each individual block. So again, for instance, you could have red panels, pink panels, crimson panels within the red block. Maybe you could shift it to various shades of green or blue depending on what block you're in. And the middle image there on the top, you could also utilize some of these panels also as different forms of signage. So at each end, bookending the corridor, you could get the different colors. Maybe it's more of a rainbow type color and different materials that you could add in there that would help, again, set off the whole corridor. We did explore, I'm not showing them in the concepts, but I do want to mention, we did explore utilizing some of these materials as bus stops as well along the corridor. So maybe there's little spots that you could put in, pocket park. Maybe something that is adjacent to a restaurant that's down there and you could go grab a coffee or grab a sandwich, you could come sit outside and sit under, you know, a nice colorful awning or, you know, just a little parklet that we call them, so that you could just enjoy being outside and watching the cars go by. You can see that in the other images up there, there's different textures, different types of concrete. Not only are we looking at, you know, your standard white or gray concrete, you can add different aggregates to it to give it a little bit of texture. You can add different pigments to give it more color. So it just feels a little bit different. I should also mention that in doing elements like this, like the panels and the different color concrete, it also tends to help with traffic calming. People do want to kind of see what's happening and see what's in the area, so they tend to not drive as fast through this corridor. But we do have different textures of plant material, different kind of grasses that you can put in there, different shrubs and perennials that will rebloom throughout the whole season, so you're not just looking at colors in the spring, green foliage all summer long. We'd hope to have a display of colors that kind of work its way through the season. And I also like to say, we are planning to put irrigation out there. However, like I mentioned, a lot of these plants that we're showing are native. So once they are established, you could dial the irrigation system back or potentially even turn it off. So getting into it here, we're starting down at Sheldon. As you can see, down at this end here, there's a small little median. We thought this would be a great spot to put in mass planting of perennials, maybe the acrylic sign panel down there to, you know, again, welcome you to the corridor. Maybe there's some decorative concrete in there as well, but just something to kind of set it off and kind of announce your arrival as you are coming into the corridor from the west. And as you move down the corridor here, there's very narrow pieces of concrete that are right in here. Thank you. Very narrow pieces of concrete that help direct traffic when they're making turns. We thought that this could be, again, that colored concrete to help make it a little more decorative, a little more appealing than just a, you know, big drab sea of black asphalt or concrete that's out there now. As you move through the intersection, you start to see this larger median piece here. That would be something, we really like the idea of movement. I mean, obviously, this is a very busy corridor and so we want the plantings and the materials to flow kind of with the movement up to the corridors. That's where you get the wavy bedlines and the wavy planting schemes that are through there. And a lot of the plants that we're proposing in here are, they're kind of free, so they will blow in the breeze a little bit. They're not very strict to kind of make it rough or feel rigid. It'll be, you know, flowing with the breeze of the cars and the airways that are the wind that blows through there. And this here is just kind of an enlargement of what that might look like. Continuing along, you can see we're trying to keep that flow of the, you know, the wavy bedlines and plantings as you move through. You know, again, we have, we wanted to set off kind of mid-block here. This is where those acrylic panels might be. And we're going to propose three different sizes, so you kind of get a different feel as you're moving through the corridor. But we thought these would be nice places to put them. They are translucent, so you can see through them, but we also position them so that they would be out of the vision triangle as you're making your Michigan left around that median. So they should be out of sight lines and shouldn't cause any issues. Again, here's another enlargement. You can see these green lines in here would represent where those panels would be. And again, you can see, as you continue to move through the corridor, we'd want to maintain these free-flowing forms, the different color plantings and different pockets, so that you kind of create some interest and break up one monotonous look. We wanted to, again, just kind of break it up a little bit. The only thing that would be continuous would be this spine that kind of runs through here. And that could be, you know, we thought ornamental grasses would be nice because those do tend to kind of blow in the breeze and they would be a nice unifier of one end of the median to the other. Here at Lily, it's a little plain because we have more of a traffic direction and so we'd have these narrow medians in here where you could add some colored concrete. But then as you get a little bit further down, we'd pick up the plantings and the rhythm again to maintain unity through the corridor. And as you get to Hagerty here, you'll see we are proposing some trees in the middle of the medians here. This was the only area where we were able to do that in our experience with MDOT. They do have standards for how close you can put a fixed object to a lane of traffic. And this was the only area where the median was wide enough to fit within that narrow window. I should mention that these panels that would go through here, while they are in a median and they are within a median where there's traffic going back and forth, they would not be fixed objects. So if a vehicle was to leave the road, it would hit the panels and they would kind of lay over. They would fall down. So they would not cause any additional harm to the driver of the vehicle. And again, as you move through Hagerty here, we pick up again and you can kind of see maintaining the same rhythm, same materials. I would mention that the plant material might be a little different. The textures would be the same, but the material would be different so that we could highlight the different colors of the different blocks. And here's some images of some of the plant material we were thinking of using. Different styles of ornamental grasses, the different colors of perennials. Here's some of the shrubs and some of the ground covers that we would propose. We do have an evergreen in here, this juniper. Here's an elevation of what it typically looks like now. As you can see, there's the center turn lane, a couple lanes of traffic, but it is very plain, kind of barren. So this is after the roadwork has redone, this is kind of what the feel would be. So you have a very planted median in the middle to kind of soften up the roadway, but you still have your lanes of traffic and your turn lanes on the outside edges. Here are some renderings we did, so you can kind of see looking down, this would be Hagerty, I believe, looking north. You can, this really shows off kind of the wavy bedlines and the big kind of mass plantings. And this gets into the panels I was talking about. Again, like I mentioned, we have three different sizes. We have a longer linear one, five feet tall by 25 feet long. We have an intermediate size, six and a half feet tall by 20 feet long, and then a taller one that's 15 feet long by eight and a half feet wide. And again, you can position these within the median. They're not positioned end to end, they're kind of positioned to overlap a little bit, so you do get a little bit more context and a little variation within the bedlines. But they would be positioned so that the bed could still move in and around them. It's a better look. And now the construction of these hasn't been fully worked out. Our anticipation is that there would be some sort of aluminum frame around it to help hold it in place, but the construction would really depend on the size and the materials that were available. If you remember from the character image on the first page, hold on, should I go back and I'll show you? Right here, this is another way they were able to do it. They just got panels that are of varying size, but they created these little slits in there to help with wind loads, so that the wind would kind of pass through it rather than push on it like a sail. But you can see they have the different pieces to hold them together here and the top of this actually swoops down and changes height. So this might be one way to address it when it's actually built. But like I mentioned, these would be on a footing in the ground and then they would be built on breakaway bolts, so that, again, if some vehicle leaves the road and hits it, it would essentially lay over. And another advantage to doing something like this is you wouldn't necessarily have to replace the entire panel if it were to be hit. You could probably get away with just replacing a couple that were hit. And there's the last view we have of some of the panels. Are there any questions on the design and the layout of it? Yes?
Thank you. I'm wondering why the acrylic panels? Is it just for beautification or is there some reason for having them?
It's just, again, create kind of a destination, a point of interest, so that when people do go down there, it just kind of enhances the experience when they're there. And we like the acrylic because it's a little bit different of a material. It's not as hard or as rigid as like a stone wall or a concrete wall or metal. It's just, it's kind of an artistic piece that would, again, enhance your experience when you go down to the corridor.
Is there any data on the use of the proposed panels?
We've proposed them, actually had done at the airport recently. They were all in to do it, just budget kind of cut out when we wanted to do there. But I have seen them proposed down south. I don't have any images of actual installations, but it is a material that we have proposed and have worked with in the past.
Okay, I guess my concern is, well, one, just trying to figure out why, you know, at the most basic. But also, and I know you touched on this a little bit, but wondering if there is any possibility of issues with glare or anything like that for people with vision issues?
I don't anticipate any issues with glare. We can get these so they have more of a matte finish that's less reflective. And also, these would be somewhat translucent, as you can see here, so you would be able to see through it. The light would pass through it.
If there's any information on that, I would love to...
Sure, sure, absolutely.
The subcommittee, they wanted more of like a modern look to the boulevard, so I think that's why Ben proposed that. It hasn't been used anywhere around here, so Canton would kind of be innovative.
Yes.
And then we thought the color panels would go well because we have that wayfinding system out on Ford Road with the different color blocks, that maybe we could incorporate those to kind of push that wayfinding a little bit more.
Right, and I think that makes sense. I just, you know, it's new to me and so just wondering about it because it seems like something that's pretty innovative, so.
Thank you for the presentation. Just, my big thing is height of everything, you know, just for viewing as you're turning. Just, and I'm sure you've thought that through and you're going to make sure the grass isn't like at the end.
Yes. Yeah, all the plant material should stay, give or take, three feet tall. So if you're sitting in your car, you should be able to see right over the top of it. The panels, obviously, those are a little bit larger, but as I mentioned, we are keeping them out of the sight lines that are standard MDOT sight lines in road design. So there was a, those beds that we chose to put them in, those were the largest, the widest. They gave us the most room to play with and they would be sitting in the middle of the bed. They wouldn't be kind of scattered closer to the roadway. So they would be as far as possible from the lane of travel, but out of sight lines. And as I mentioned, they are translucent, so you would be able to see through them. Yes?
Yeah, so again, just a question on the panels, like, is there like eight high?
Sir, yeah, since the panels are eight and a half feet high. So, you know, usually people like when they're traveling on one side, if they're looking for some stores on the left hand, on the other side of the road, wouldn't the panels be like a block for their vision?
I don't feel that they would. As you can see in the rendering here, the eye point here is probably four or five feet tall. So you can kind of see right over the top of them. And they are fairly short in the grand scheme of the corridor. And if you're moving through at 35 miles an hour, you'll pass them relatively quickly. So it's not going to be an extended obstruction, if you will. But also, considering the size and the height, we felt that if they were too short, and we had a lot of internal conversations about this too, if they're too short, they would kind of get lost in the space out there because when you look at, you know, the width of the roadway, it's pretty wide. So we wanted to have a scale of the panels to fit the corridor or fit the width of the...
So they would be rapidly placed?
No, there would be one location per block. Okay.
Thank you.
Go back up to...
Thank you. So I like it overall. I really love the colored concrete and the plantings and the design of it, the more modern look that you mentioned. I don't think we should recreate our last look. We did it well and now it's time for a new Ford Road. And so I agree with that. Yeah, the panels, that's kind of a cool idea. I'd be interested in seeing like some places that you've mentioned, even if they're not in Michigan, that they've been used successfully. And I was wondering, like, because I can imagine, you know, them being used in like Phoenix, Arizona, where it's always sunny and they look really cool, but half the year here, it's kind of gray. So think about what that means and, you know, would they get snow pushed up against them and stuff like that? So, and then on the plantings, is this, I mean, I see like day lilies and other things and there's some more maybe things that are natural, the grasses that you mentioned, those do have to be cut down at the end of the year, right? You have to go in there. So we'll be able to do that and like just go in and trim them all down?
Yes, I will say to that front, two things. One, we were not allowed to use day lilies. We were expressly told.
No. It just looked like the shape of them.
No, I totally get it.
Whatever they were, yeah.
I'm joking. So, but with the maintenance, there is really no such thing as a no-maintenance landscape. There will be some upkeep necessary. What we are showing here is trying to accomplish the least amount of maintenance that we can. So with respect to the grasses, they will need to be cut, but typically, that's once a year. If you want to leave them up for winter interest, you can absolutely do that and just cut them down in the spring. If you don't want to deal with it in the spring, you can cut them down in the fall while you're doing other maintenance work.
I kind of like mine in the winter because they look nice in the snow and stuff, but...
And with respect to the color panels in the winter, this was another discussion point we had internally. We like the idea of having those out there. I mean, now, kind of getting out of it today, but over the last couple of months, it's just, it's drab, it's slushy, it's gray. It'd be kind of neat to have a pop of color along the corridor that stands out and draws your attention.
So is lighting a separate plan? Yeah, okay, we're not talking about that. I didn't see it in there, so I wasn't sure. Okay.
It's common.
Okay.
We have had internal discussions about the lighting. So what's proposed here should fit very well with whatever lighting.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to add too, I didn't touch on it, but one of the other things we discussed is adding some trees along the corridor. It was difficult to do here because the roadway is pushed almost right to the right of way. There's really only a four or five foot swath of grass between the edge of sidewalk and the curb. So one thought we had, and this would take some coordination down the line, but there is a sea of concrete on the other side of the right of way. Maybe there's opportunity to discuss this with some of the business owners or the mall owners, that it might help enhance their property as well as the corridor to lose a handful of spaces along the perimeter and put some trees in on both sides of the roadway. And this was also kind of our discussion on the parklets as well. It might enhance business at some of these local, you know, how nice would it be to go grab a coffee at, you know, lunchtime and sit out, like I mentioned, and just take in the sun or read a book or whatever if you have a nice colorful plaza that you can sit in and just kind of relax?
That reminds me, not the trees, but the concrete that you mentioned. The other question I had is, will you look at tying something into the sidewalks to sort of match what's in the median? In other words, maybe just a little edge of the color or something on the concrete, so it kind of ties it all in, not just in the center?
That's one of the things we could do. Maybe we don't have a, you know, a small little parklet or a little plaza that people can sit in, but maybe it's just a diamond cutout where we put some colored concrete in.
Along the way?
Yeah, that we had discussed. For the concept, we tried to keep it right of way to right of way and the sidewalks were outside of the right of way. So, but it was something that we were kicking around while we were doing our sketches.
Summer, and then just, yes, just remember to speak into microphones directly.
No, I was just going to say, the subcommittee has been meeting about this project, I think, since last summer or almost a year now. I think it was last May when we started. And our priorities were number one, to put something that was low maintenance, that was modern, that kind of changed the existing feel of the Ford Road corridor. So folks knew that it was new and that it was branded as Canton. They knew it was Canton as soon as they entered Ford Road. And so that was one of our priorities. I'm really excited about this project. I know the, I had concerns about the acrylic panels, but I think they really will work out well, especially with the coloring and the light fixtures that we have picked out that we're working on. They really will, you know, improve the feel of the corridor and, you know, make sure that there's enough lighting for folks who are not only driving through, but if they decide to walk along the paths as well.
Great.
Yeah, people are going to think I'm obsessed with acrylic panels, but, you know, just such a new concept for us. Wondering, I know everything is supposed to be low maintenance, but wondering, do the acrylic panels ever need to be cleaned?
It's a valid question. They might. It could be rain that does it. It could be maybe once a year or twice a year, somebody has to go out and just wipe them down. That being said, there are only 24. being said, there are only 24, I think, out there. So there's not a ton of them that would take somebody forever to do. I think it could be done relatively easily.
Thank you.
So every board member gets three panels?
And I don't know if we asked, also, I mean, like you said with the salt, would they withstand salt spray?
They should, yeah, yep.
That coat it for a while?
That's a good question. That might be the one time of year, you might have to go down and just spray it down to make sure all the salt gets wiped off of it.
Yes.
A green light?
There's a green light that you'll see?
Yes. Hi. First, I like the design. It looks very nice. I like the colors. I can see the acrylic panels being, for drivers and for visitors, kind of like a way to easily find a store, perhaps, to assist people. I was wondering, in your engineering, did you engineer speed limits to design drivers to go slower than they currently go now on Ford Road? The safety issue is what.
I understand.
Yeah, that's, that's my main concern, but.
The engineering for the roadway was done previously to us getting the plan, so we didn't have any, any say in the way that the medians were laid out. With that said, some of the elements that we have included here have helped with, with traffic calming. Yeah, I mean, we didn't, we didn't have any, any role or any play in setting speed limits, or laying out the new road configuration, but as I mentioned, some of the stuff that we're showing here could help with keeping people slower. How much slower, I really couldn't say.
Khalil, so MDOT will be having a community town hall, and they can be asked questions like that, because they would be the road designers. Thank you. Jim, you had a question?
Thank you very much for the work done, and thank you very much for the invitation to be here. A couple of thoughts, if I may. One is, you know, we all know Michigan climate and the like, and I take it that the selection of plant materials are extremely salt resistant.
Yes.
And have that kind of durability quality to be able to sustain themselves, because it's, relatively speaking, it's a narrow median, so it's going to get bombarded from both eastbound and westbound, you know, traffic lanes. That would be pretty important. I'm pleased to see the idea of the multi-texture on the, on the concrete, because I thought that that would be important beyond the color, that there also be a, you know, a greater stone quantity, or something, a textural context as well, that is visually stimulating to the, to the eye as well. My comments regarding the panels are sort of like, I understand and appreciate the desire to be, you know, somewhat modern. That can sometimes, you know, become easily dated. Those of us who had a, an olive-green refrigerator during, you know, at the time we woke, time we were growing up, might recall such things. To some degree, a bigger concern with regard to the panels for me, I do think it has the prospect of being easily dated. The replacement cost should be a consideration. If anybody who has a clear glass shower door knows, you know, the, the, the spray or the like has a tendency to stick around until there's a far more aggressive cleaning action. But one of the other concerns I'd have regarding the panels would be whether or not they might have the prospect to become a target for graffiti. Being flat, various sizes, it has that kind of a concern. The, the idea that came to my mind as an alternative to consider, you know, one of the signature elements of Canton's Ford Road, you know, corridor is the sculpture. And that's a notable and uniquely Canton, you know, a feature. And whether or not, you know, possibly through, you know, commissions or through competitions, might you, instead of a panel, consider soliciting ideas for innovative, creative sculptures to be utilized and placed in those medians that are appropriate for, you know, for the setting, for the context, for, I, I honestly don't think that very many people come to the community or drive to the community and think, well, oh gee, the Black Rock is in the red zone, or I, or I think my store is in the blue zone. You know, we, if you're not from the community, you're utilizing a GPS which is address-focused, and so you're looking for the 42400 block, you're looking for the 4300 block of the community. And whether or not some of that kind of signage that Jackson Road, west side of Ann Arbor, in Syo Township, does a pretty good job of providing both in the median and along the, the edge of the right-of-way, signage which gives drivers an indication of where you are relative to the addresses. And I would hope maybe the DDA might consider that as well. But more importantly, I think that we could do something more creatively with sculpture, which is already one of the, one of the DDA's signature items and notable elements of Ford, of the Ford Road corridor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good feedback. Thank you. With regard to the plant material, absolutely, it's all, we try to use as much native material as we could. We have a number of references that, that we use to gauge how well certain plants do with salt, not only salt applied to the soil, but salt spray through the air. The most notable one is Chicago. They have a very extensive database that we refer to regularly. But with regard to the native plantings, they tend to do a little bit better in these conditions. And in the spring, when the water comes in, it helps flush out all the soil, or all the salt out of the soil, they do bounce back relatively easily. And as far as the sculptures, that's a very good idea, very good point. The thing that we have to be concerned with there is MDOT. They're the ultimate ones who will allow whatever we decide to go with in the, in the medians. I will say, recently in Rochester Hills, we did do some very sculptural pieces in a much narrower median. It was not an MDOT road, and it's closer to the road, but it is still breakaway. So if something does hit it, it will topple over. If you get into sculptural pieces, should one of those be hit, replacement costs would be considerably larger than the acrylic panels. The acrylic panels are relatively inexpensive to make and put out there.
Once again, that could be possibly part of the commission that needs to be made of, you know, wood. It needs to be made out of an aluminum or something that is relatively inexpensive, and the design itself easily replicable.
Yes, yep.
All good points, Jim and Khalil. The, in New York City for 30 or 40 years now, the MTA, the subway, has used materials building their subway cars that are anti-graffiti. And so maybe you can research how that works, and whether these could be utilized, so, to ensure there's no graffiti put on these.
Yeah, I do believe there's an anti-graffiti finish that could be applied. I believe they do it on various buildings, so if somebody does go tag it, you can just hose it off pretty easily. Good point.
So new, and we don't know a lot. If we were to go with the panels to try it out, maybe they just don't work, or they get too dirty. I mean, it doesn't look like it would be too hard to just take them out of the median.
No, the only, the only thing that would be more difficult would be any foundations that were put in the ground.
Right, okay.
However, it could just, you could do it on a trial basis. Maybe you make one or two of them, you stick them off to the side and see how they work for a year or two, and then go from there.
Along those lines, you know that a lot of times people hit the artwork, and we've had to replace it. So what's the average cost of some of the artwork that we're seeing?
They're upwards of $40,000 to $60,000 per piece.
And the panels, I think, were like $26,000, weren't they?
I don't recall, yeah. I think they're in that neighborhood.
And we do, I deal with a lot of hit walls and light poles out there. So I will say, everything is insured, and we would recoup the cost of anything that was damaged less $1,000, because that's our deductible on any light pole wall, anything, you know, and I would assume that that would also apply to the panels and the landscaping, if there was some kind of accident. We could recuperate some of those costs for replacement.
But like Jim had kind of said with being dated, you, we would probably want, if we went with the acrylic panels, we had spoken about this earlier, keep some in our storage area for backup, in case they're not manufactured anymore.
Yep, just like we do with our light poles, we always have a supply on hand for the ones that do get hit, so we can replace them quite easily.
And could we utilize the footing somehow on a whole, 10 years down the road, when we say, God, that, that looks like, you know, the future land from Disney World from 1960, and, and so, or, so now we want to do something else, we can attach a whole new thing to the footing?
It would be possible. We haven't done any engineering or any details for how these panels would be constructed. My guess would be that they would just be the circular, you know, pilings that go in every, you know, so, so many feet. It would absolutely be possible to reuse them, provided they remain in good condition, they haven't been compromised by any vehicle accidents, and whatever is put in place of the panels is, doesn't weigh anymore. It's all calculated by load and such, but definitely a possibility.
Comments? Anyone online? Go ahead. So what are your next steps, and what is your timing, where you need information or decisions?
Well, really, we have a little bit of time, because for our last meeting with MDOT, they're targeting 2024, 2025. So I think the next step would be probably for everybody to kind of think about it, and maybe submit to my email any questions or concerns, and then I can get with Ben and Ken, and we can kind of address those. And if you guys feel like you want to come together again for a next study session to kind of hash things out, if you want to change anything, or are concerned about anything. I mean, the panels are a big unknown, for sure.
Absolutely. This is not the first time we've had these kind of discussions about them. They are, they're a relatively new concept, but yet it's still one that we feel would really help make a statement down there, and again, make it more of a destination, kind of a place to be, if you will. I was just looking, there's a, she has the estimate pulled up, we're anticipating that each panel would be about $20,000. But again, I would say, we have not done any detailing of them, or anything like that. With the acrylic panels, this is the same type of material that is used for a lot of outdoor lighting for signage. What's proposed here might be a little bit thicker, but it's the same type of material. So I don't anticipate it going out of style with the new innovations in LED lighting and all those types of applications.
I also mentioned something about addresses. Would this be part of this design, or do we do something different?
Well, that's what I was thinking, when you said that, because you said those acrylic panels have the option of maybe putting some signage on them.
Yeah.
So maybe we could put the blocks on them, you know, the block addresses?
Yep, you could definitely do that, yep. And I will reiterate, this is just a conceptual design. This is one that we've been going back and forth. This is by no means cast-in-stone. So if there are questions, absolutely let us know. We can definitely work through it as we work to finalize it.
Another thought that just popped in my mind is, if you, if you do go and continue to utilize the panels, maybe you can incorporate both sculpture with the panel, and that is, and it might reduce the prospect of some, of flat rectangular graffiti use, if it, if it was, let's say, carved to look like waves of grain or something along that line.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, obviously, more creative minds than my own, you know, would be able to, you know, possibly come up with some attractive, you know, some waves to the panel itself, or something like that. So it is both sculptural as well as, you know, acrylic and translucent.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Questions or comments? Oh, go ahead.
One other question, I'm so sorry. Yeah, trustee Snyder mentioned about the trees, and that's, that's coming with a later plan. Is, is the later plan also going to be addressing replacements of the mini brick walls?
Actually, what we're going to do is more, because there's so much, it's going to be wider, what I think the township board and the DDA had agreed on is we will be minimalistic during the long stretches, so we were just going to sod those in, that would be grass. And then all the plantings would be at the corner wall. So we're not going to keep a lot of the knee walls, because a lot of them are going to get removed as part of the project. So instead of putting them back in, we wanted a more modern look and feel. We would only use them as kind of welcome posts at each intersection, and then just have grass. It's easier to maintain, you know, irrigation, maintenance, that kind of thing. So we would, all our plantings would be in the median and at the corners.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody, any questions? Okay, I'm sorry, I also forgot to introduce everybody here, except for deputy supervisors, Joseph Haver. So the next steps are, like you said, we have some time, so we'll give you some questions, and you can answer them, and come up with other suggestions. Okay, all right, great. Let me see if we have anyone online that wants to... Anyone online want to say anything? I noticed we have more attendees now. Anyone for public comment? Public comment? Any public comment? Well, let me see first, and any public comment on this? Sure, no, go ahead, give us a public comment. You want to go to the podium, or, or one of my microphones? Yes. We could state your name. Questions or anything we could take back, and we can respond to you later, you know? Could you use a microphone?
Lot of things we would like to cover, but we realize we're limited to three minutes. If I cannot get in in three minutes, what we've planned for me to get in in three minutes, can my neighbor yield part of his time to me?
Sure, you can also ask us via, you know, tomorrow, send us an email or something like that, if you don't get everything in.
My name is Rich Conway. I reside at 43721 Bannockburn Drive. I've lived there with my wife for about 37 years. I want to bring to the board's attention, although at least one of the board members is already aware of this, a residential property at 43722 Hanford, that's directly behind my home. And that property is directly across the street from Miller Elementary School. It's sold a year ago today, and although it is a residential property, it has not been occupied and has not been used as a residential property for at least a year. It is, we believe, and there are very, very clear indicators, that it is most likely being used as a marijuana grow operation, an illegal marijuana grow operation, in our opinion. And it, grow operation is almost certainly being used for commercial purposes. I think there are zoning issues, property values, and some criminal activity that concerns us about that property. The folks that are what I'll call the principals in that property appear to have a harvest of the marijuana product about every two months. They bring in approximately 15 to 20 people who show up for approximately two to four hours. A woman who is a member of our homeowners association, Carriage Hills, has suggested that she has some concerns that those 15 to 20 people who may be the ones who process, reap the product, whatever the proper term is, might be involved with, in, or vulnerable to, or perhaps victims of human trafficking. We have brought this matter to the attention of at least one board member back in September. And the same day we did that, that board member put us in touch with the police chief, gave us his direct dial number. We spoke to him, and when I say we, there are three of us who were involved at the time, three neighbors, we spoke to him at some length, and he told us that there was an active investigation, apparently since July, when someone first complained about this situation, and that he was going to have a command officer, his words, contact us. That was on September 16th of last year. We're still waiting for that phone call. We followed up with the police chief on 11/23/21, two days before Thanksgiving, again contacted him at his direct dial number. He told us that he had given an order, his word, for an investigation to take place. He seemed surprised that no one had contacted us, said that he needed to ask one question, his word, one question, and he would call us back. We're still waiting for that phone call. There is a possibility that yet a second board member was contacted by the homeowners association on. association on or about February 23rd of this year, excuse me, February 3rd of this year. Now, after each of the contacts we've had, or the homeowners association has had with the police department, there is a noticeable change in the pattern of activity at that home behind where I live. It's causing some of us to think that the people that are involved in that activity are being tipped off to our concerns. And in fact, two days after we last contacted the police chief, the listed homeowner there joined a neighborhood website, which is generally used to discuss situations in the neighborhood. As far as I know, nobody's been discussing him. One might think that he was either curious about whether or not somebody was discussing him, or he was simply interested in being a good neighbor. But that would be belied by the fact that less than two weeks later, he started turning his rear yard into a landfill. Some of that debris is now in my yard. I've had five contacts with the ordinance department, telephone calls, personal visits, you name it. Half of that, what I call landfill, is still there. The debris is still in my yard. As of today, the court's website doesn't indicate that anybody's been cited for anything. In addition, that homeowner behind me was required to obtain permits for some, well, let's say some work he did on the property, probably in pursuit of his operation, his grow operation. We were told initially that once he pulled the permits, there would be inspections, that somebody would have to go inside the house, a mechanical inspector and an electrical inspector. As of 2/22, we are now told that there have been no inspections. There will be no inspections unless the homeowner contacts the building department, schedules an inspection, and agrees to it. What are the permits for? Is that a revenue generating operation, or is it for safety and quality of the workmanship? Personally, and I'll let my neighbor give his opinion, but personally, I think that we've been misled by the Canton Township government and the police department specifically. It's not the first time that's happened to me concerning an investigation of criminal activity. Tony, can I have a minute of your time? May I continue? Thank you. I think there's two questions that need to be answered. Why were we misled? And if I may, I think misled is a very polite term for what I think is going on here. And to what extent were we misled? It may be a competency issue, it may be a misconduct issue. I'd like to think it's only a competency issue, but it could be both. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. Tony Schumery, I live a couple doors down from Rich. My concern is, my yard, actually, he, the house in question is behind me and over two doors. However, I've lived there for almost 19 years. I'm a retired police officer. I have a pool in my backyard. And my thing, my, my main concern is, why isn't there anything being done? Is, if it's legal to have this grow operation in the middle of a subdivision, which I find it hard to believe, let alone across the street from elementary school? I want an answer. Is that why nobody's touching, touching this or getting back to us? Because it's starting to piss us off, and we're not the only ones. Our other neighbors too. Something needs to be done about this home, just like nobody here would want this going on in their backyard. I have a pool in my yard, I have four children. Why is it that when I go in the pool in the summer, I have to smell this odor of marijuana all day and all night? This morning, taking out my trash, I smell it. Why? Where's my quality of life in this township? I don't understand it. I want an answer as to why nothing is being done. If it's legal and the township don't want to touch it because marijuana is legal now, then tell us that. Nobody wants to touch it. I understand the marijuana laws have changed over the years. I said, I was a cop for 25 years. I don't want to live like this. Something needs to be done about this house. And like I said, if nobody wants to do anything about it, I want to know why. I should not have to smell the odor of skunk marijuana in my neighborhood, day in and day out, especially bothers me in the summertime. Like I said, I have four kids, we are outside all the time, I have a pool we like to lay in and have fun with. Why am I smelling this odor? I know a couple of other officers that work here in the township, and they informed me that the city of, Garden City actually passed an ordinance prohibiting the odor of the marijuana seeping from the homes or wherever they're growing it from. They have to invest in a filtration system where it doesn't release the odor to the neighborhoods. Why don't we have that here? Like Garden City, how are they allowed to have it? Why can't we don't have it here? Like I said, I'm just getting, we're getting upset. I want something done about this, and somebody to get back with us. Thank you.
Anyone else, any other public comment? The DDA, is there any comments that you would like to make as a board, any board members? Okay, how about any board comments from Canton Trustee Board? Tanya? Kate?
I just wanted to hope that everyone who wanted to got to have some Punch Key today, and happy Punch Key Day to everyone.
Thank you. Steven?
No, although I did have Punch Key today, so I enjoyed it. No, good meeting, thank you very much for the information. I look forward to the project going forward.
Thank you. Summer?
I did not have a Punch Key today, but great meeting. Thank you to the DDA and for the team for presenting today.
Thank you. Diane?
Again, yes, thank you very much for the meeting, we appreciate it. And I also want to thank all of the Canton Township employees. Friday is Employee Appreciation Day. We appreciate all of you guys. And Employee Appreciation Day is always the first Friday in March, so the board will be having some donuts or something special tomorrow in the boardroom for everybody, but thank you all so much.
Great, thank you. I would like to thank everybody for coming, I appreciate you being here, thank you for the presentation. I'd also like to say to the comments that were made, that we do, the police officers, Canton has the greatest police officers, with great integrity. Laws have changed, and they are doing everything they can. If you want, we can speak to the police chief again tomorrow, but I can assure you that not, nothing is being done, and I have spoken to other neighbors about this, so just, if you guys haven't heard about that, they have been spoken to. Okay? So you can call my office tomorrow, we can talk to the police chief. And you can get more information, but great, everybody, thank you for coming again. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Great, meeting adjourned, thank you.